Good evening. We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is our hand, one nation, united in this world, liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Okay. I've got the time as 7:03. So any members of the public out there that wish to attend the meeting may do so in person at the Town Hall Auditorium or attend remotely using Zoom. If attending in person, please wear masks and social distance. If attending by telephone, the board will be using Zoom. Use the following information to join the meeting. HTTPS backslash backslash zoom.us backslash J backslash nine five four oh one three three four four nine nine. Call this or call this number one four six five eight five eight six five six. And the meeting ID code will be nine five four oh one three three four four nine nine. And if you have problems, you can call the extension, Town Hall Extension, at six oh three six five nine three six one seven, extension thirteen twenty-one. With that being said, I'd like to get on to the business. We've got some people here, so if it's all right with the members here, we'll go on to deal with the people and we'll deal with the minutes after the after the regular business is done. First on the agenda is Robert Lang, Brian and Diane Leary. There will be a public hearing for an application for special exemption reference section thirty-two, two thirty-four accessory apartments of the New Market zoning ordinance requested by Robert Lang slash Brian and Diane Leary to permit a nine hundred and ninety square foot accessory apartment addition to the existing single-family home. The property is located at fourteen Darrell Drive, Taxmap, R5 lot one fifty-nine, R2 zone. With that being said, I'll turn the floor over to the applicants. Who's here to speak for the applicants?
Robert Lang.
Step right up. State your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lang. I'm from twenty Portsmouth Avenue, Stratton, New Hampshire. And I'm here with Brian and Diane Leary about the AD unit that they would like to propose to put on their house. I went to the building inspector and applied for a building permit, which I was denied, obviously, and asked to redo the permit for AD unit, which we have under one thousand square feet. We called the manual engineering in and out of Stratton and had the land surveyed for the foundation certification and to make sure that we're well inside of the thirty-foot setback, which we are, by about four feet. We've gone through all the steps that were required by the town and the building inspector to get to tonight's meeting. What we're asking you to do is to grant us permission to build a nine hundred and ninety square foot addition to the back of Diane and Brian and Larry's house for their parents to live in, not for an apartment building or any other reason. They're trying to bring their parents here from Texas to live with them, to take care of them. And that is the sole purpose of what this application is about this evening.
Bringing them to safe zone, huh?
What, sir?
They're bringing them to safe zone?
Yes, sir. Bringing them up to, you know, we all love this area. I grew up in Exeter. I love the seacoast and New Market. And, you know, it, I don't think there's any better place in the United States to live personally. I think it's a great thing that they want to bring their parents here to help them out and to live with them. And the whole application is about helping family. And at the same token, you know, we've looked at several different outlines of building this AD unit on their house. At one point, we talked about building it lengthwise off the other end of the house, but we didn't want to block off the neighbors. And everything that we've done here, we've tried to do with aesthetics in mind and what the town is best for the neighborhood. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Brian. You can talk about the reasons why they want to do it, sir. Unless you have any questions for me.
For anyone that's out there looking at this, you can go on to the town's website and go into the zoning board and look at the agenda, and you can get all the materials we're looking at over here. So you'll be able to follow along, if you're following along at home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, both Diana and Brian will speak to the reasons that we are requesting this addition. Like Bob said, this is solely for the purpose of allowing my parents to come up here from Texas as they've aged, to be able to be as independent as possible and to allow for space in the future where if they need, you know, handicap facilities of more accessible to older, you know, needs, that is our hope and our desire. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you for doing that. Both my in-laws are, both my father and my mother-in-law are in accessory apartments. So I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'm just going to quickly read there are eight criteria for an accessory apartment. The minimum of between three hundred and one thousand square feet of finished living space shall be either an efficiency apartment without a separate bedroom or a one- or two-bedroom apartment. One dwelling unit must be owner-occupied, and I take it that would be you.
Correct.
And there shall be a minimum of two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. So that means a total of four on the lot.
Sure.
No exterior changes shall be made unless they maintain the aesthetic continuity of the accessory dwelling unit with the principal dwelling unit as a single-family dwelling. Adequate water and sewer disposal shall be provided. If town and water, town water and sewer service to the site, tie-in fees will be paid. Granting the special exception shall be consistent with section five one B. An interior door shall be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling dwelling unit. However, it shall not be required to remain unlocked. So so far, I think you've met all of that.
We have met all of those, sir, yes. Actually, I met with the building inspector when we were down with one by one on the plan to make sure that we've got everything that was that was part of it.
Smart of you. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to quickly open it up for public comment, and we'll see if there's anybody out there that's got anything to say about this. So.
Sounds good.
Should we stay up there or sit down?
Have a seat. Stand there. If there's any questions, you'll be asked to respond to them. So with that being said, I'll open this up to public comment. If there's anyone out there that's got a something to say about this, now's your chance.
Can we just give our comments?
Can you give me your name and address? I'm not hearing you real well.
Oh, sure. My name is Carrie Bosmar. We live at one Edwin Lane here in New Market, right behind Brian and Diana. I guess my only concern is the fact that it's not just the accessory dwelling, that there's also going to be a garage. And it's going to be, you know, nine hundred and ninety square feet for the accessory dwelling and then another seven hundred and thirty square foot each for the garage. And I just find that, I don't, you know, as long as they meet all the rules of regulations, obviously, there's something that can really screw about it. But I just want to point out that fifteen hundred square feet in our backyard is not a lot of space for privacy, et cetera.
Okay. Are you building a garage with this, too?
Yes, we are, sir.
Okay. That's not what the drawing we've got here shows.
Yes, sir. The drawing does show the garage, sir. Yep.
That's not what I'm, oh, the garage is, all right, the garage is there. Oh, it's, all right.
So I mean, obviously, I want to.
No, what I'm.
As a parent and always there, and I completely understand. I just am concerned about where he's going in the backyard.
The garage is on the front side towards Darrell, next to the garage that's existing now.
That's not what this is showing, all right? It was showing a rectangular building. This is obviously a dog leg.
Yes.
It's not what, that's not what the plan's showing over here.
There were a couple of iterations to your plan. Maybe you could.
Can I approach?
Confirm.
Sure, come on up.
Do you mind?
Great.
On the existing one here, on this particular plan right here, sir, this is the addition proposed. This is the garage right here. This is the existing garage. This is the auxiliary dwelling unit back here. This is not part of this at all.
Okay.
The garage stops right here.
Well, that's not.
This is the living space. It's right here.
That's not what the plans show.
I'm sorry. So this particular plan that Brian did.
No, I follow it now, but it was, it's very.
So this one right here goes like this, oops, I'm sorry, attached to here.
Yep. And you're putting.
And the garage is right here.
You're putting another garage in over here.
Right here. This is the garage. This is the existing garage.
All right. That, we need to get that clarified on whatever plans we're going to get recorded. But that's not what this drawing is showing.
Do you have the other drawing that I put with the file that I drew?
There were a couple of iterations because the first one.
There should be another.
Why with the requirement?
No, no.
See, this is what, this was what.
Yes, this has been removed.
That's fine.
The building inspector asked you to go away. So there's a wall right here. This is the auxiliary dwelling. This is the garage coming in off of Darrell here.
Okay.
For the two parking spots.
You understand my confusion. You're showing this.
Yes.
And it's not showing, it's not showing an additional garage in there. So.
Which, which drawing shows the, your proposed?
I don't have any other plans. It's just what I got in the file.
I gave the building inspector the other plan showing the garage.
Is it online?
That this is.
That I don't know.
This was just printed today. So.
Yep. I handed him the complete file was showing the garage on that, on the front of it. So this is the garage right here going across there.
What it should have here is.
Yep, that's the garage. Yep.
New garage.
Yes, sir.
All right. I think I understand now.
Yep. And this is the nine hundred and ninety square feet back here. And this is the garage on the front.
So that was previously documented as a living area?
No, it was just, it was just not clear.
No, but I mean, this is where the garage is now, is proposed. Is that correct?
Right. This was the survey done by a manual engineer. What we're showing is the boundary lines.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right, exactly. Which is what we originally tried to show with it. And I did submit another plan that I did with the building inspector and this whole thing, showing the garage separate from the house and how the whole thing is going to be laid out.
Okay, well.
You didn't, it wasn't put in the, in the folder. So.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to slap Michael's hand. It should have made it in.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I, I forgot your name, ma'am. What was, what was your name again? The abutter that spoke?
Kelly. Is it Kelly? Hi.
Carrie.
Carrie?
Carrie.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie Bosmar, one Edwin Lane.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we got it a little bit cleared up. It's unclear on the drawings that there's a garage going in. Appears it's clear with the building inspector, but it did make it on to our drawings. The, the criteria for an accessory unit are not something we have a whole heck of a lot of latitude with. If it meets the criteria, we must grant. So, so now that we've got it squared away, we've got something the building inspector can keep an eye on and make sure it's all compliant.
When I sat down, sir, with the building inspector, myself and him, we went over the layout for the garage, the parking spaces, which have to be met with the AD unit, and the layout for coming off of Darrell with the driveway coming into it, to make sure that what he told me, I met with the plan that I submitted to him.
No.
What you're seeing is the engineering and the, we wanted to make sure that the thirty-foot setback, which is really important to the development itself, make sure that we weren't encroaching on any neighbor's property and we met all of those criteria.
That's fine. You, you do. I mean, it's not, not, not an issue of, from what I can see.
Right.
It's just, it caused a little bit of confusion.
No problem. That's why I'm here to try to clarify anything I can answer.
All right. Is there anyone else that has, wants to speak on this subject, on this application? Can you take your mask down or get a little closer? I can't understand you.
I'm going out to the town with about three ten with land.
Okay.
I was just curious.
We can't, I can't, you're too far from the mic. I can't hear you. I get, I get nothing.
Oh, there's a microphone. Hello?
Hello? I get you now.
Oh, okay. I think from my child living in a small, it's very difficult to name the whole name of the look.
You're, you're, we're, we're getting, we're getting every other word.
Based on looking at small lot lines that are here, was evaluation at the length of the house?
We still can't hear you.
We still can't hear you. Get, get in front of the computer.
If I stand, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yes.
Okay. So the microphone must not be working. I was just curious, based on the aesthetics of the neighborhood with the small property lines, I mean, these are small lot sizes and the garage plus the addition of the house is equivalent to the footprint of my house existing. Why they wouldn't go lengthwise because they thought it would be more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood, I think both Carrie and I would prefer it to go lengthwise. But once again, if they meet the criteria, you know, just putting that out there. Because I don't think it aesthetically fits based on the design.
Well, we looked at it in both directions, sir. And putting the addition lengthwise on it makes it more visible to everybody in the neighborhood. By putting it where we did it behind it and on an L shape, it makes it more appealing to look at from the outside. And we're trying to keep the consistency of the house, the aesthetics of the house and the look of the house without changing it to look like it's a two-family dwelling or a duplex, which by, by code, we're not allowed to make it look like a duplex. It must maintain the look of a single-family home. That was our goal from the start. And the second goal was to make sure that the people in the neighborhood wouldn't see this long building sitting there.
Understood. Just that's a personal preference. And I think the preference of the people in this room from one and three Edwin Lane would prefer that it goes the other way.
It just might be difficult to maintain the criteria of the zoning ordinance that says it's got, it's got a door that's common. But anyway.
We wouldn't be able to have a common door if we did it that way.
So we have no latitude in the aesthetic. This is the owner's, owner's prerogative, and it meets the criteria. So if you want to talk to him and you can work something out with the building inspector, that's, that's all well and good. It would be, might be beneficial for you guys to just enter into a little bit of dialogue, but I can't force you. Is, is there anyone else out there that has some comment on this? Not here.
Also, one other thing about the design of it, the way we set it up, it makes it easier for Diane's parents to get to the main house and for Diane and Brian to be able to get to the auxiliary dwelling in case anything happens if they need them. And all of these points were well thought out before we did this thing.
Okay. Very good. The, where I don't hear any other comments coming out, I'll close the public hearing portion of it. And I failed to mention, we've only got three members on the board right now. For a full quorum, we've got five. So we can continue on with this at your discretion and vote on it with three members, or we can wait till we get a full quorum with five.
Brian, that's, it's your, you, you guys have to make that choice.
Absolutely. This is your hearing.
No, I just wanted to address both of the neighbors' comments. And we have lived in this community for about twenty-eight years. And our neighborhood is very important to us, as our neighbors are. I understand about privacy issues, and I have talked with the neighbors. And I've been willing to put up more landscaping to help them have that feeling of privacy. So we are doing this with the interest of our neighbors as best that we can. And we do care about them. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I made notes on just.
So go ahead. We will defer to you guys to have the vote. Three of you, we're okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with all the comments being made, I'll close it to the public and we'll open it up for discussion amongst the board members. Wayne, chime in anytime. Al?
I, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Good. Hi, Bob.
Hi, Wayne.
Hi, Al. I went out there today and sat in the truck and looked. I see they have, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they've delineated the corners of the new building with some high stakes and.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So I'm looking at the correct thing.
Yes, sir.
In the back corner closest to your neighbor, you claim that you're going to be six feet setback from the thirty-foot rear setback.
Yes, sir.
See, okay. What I have a question about, and maybe Diane can explain this. From that point, to the neighbor, and I'm glad the neighbor is here, I think they were here. Did they leave?
They left, it looks like. Oh, they're, they're still here.
Okay, good. What I'm questioning is, is where is the actual property line? Is this the property line that you're showing here? Or the six, six feet off the building property line?
No, we have a thirty-foot setback. It's thirty-six feet behind the addition.
So where?
The property line is the stone wall.
Wait, wait a minute.
Yes.
So where is the property line, the stone wall?
The stone wall is the property line, which is fifty-six feet behind the house.
Fifty-six feet from.
Yes, sir.
Well, you got it as thirty-three foot six over here.
Right. That's to the edge of the addition.
Correct.
So the addition is twenty feet. So technically off the house right now, it's fifty-six feet from the back of the house.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
Yes, sir.
All right. See, your plan, you don't show the stone wall. So.
No, they show the, Wayne, they show the property line and they show a drill hole found. So I'm sure that a manual.
I don't have that.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
No, I don't have that map. I printed it off of the website and I.
Oh, it was on there.
It was?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't have, but all right.
Yeah, we hired a manual engineer to make sure that everything was met and that we didn't want to make any mistakes with the property line or the setback rules or anything.
No, they've got the set, they've got the setback drawn in.
That's.
And basically.
With that being said, I've got to, I've got to agree with the neighbor. It does look, if it's legal, then that's the way it is. But I, I understand where the neighbor is coming from, I guess. I guess that's, and the other, one other thing I wanted to say is that I'd like to make this contingent upon a better plan denoting the garage area.
That's fine. Yep, whatever you want.
So are you ready to make a mo, do you want to say anything, Al?
I'm ready to make a motion to, to.
Have I?
I'll second that.
With, with, why don't you state it so that we've got a motion made that a better site plan is provided that shows the new garage? And hopefully, it's already been done and Mike has it in his, in his possession.
It has been done and Mike does have it in his possession.
Yeah, and, and.
Yep. And Al gladly redraw, will even have an architect draw it up if that's what they want.
All we need to do is make sure we understand what we're referencing.
Yep.
And when you have that done, get it right to Diane and her office.
Gladly. You got it, of course I will. Whatever you want.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Roll call vote. Wayne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Al, how do you vote? I vote aye, so the ayes have it. You've got your...
Great, thank you very much. All set?
All right, we're all set.
Have a good evening, thank you.
All right, that's this. This should be the second. It was, all right, that's fine. I don't need it. All right, the next item on the agenda is, um, there'll be a public hearing for an application for a special exception, reference section thirty-two dash forty-six B two A, and a variance reference section thirty-two eighty-six residential density and table thirty-two dash eighty-nine dimensional table of the New Market zoning ordinance requested by C C eighty-six Main Street LLC to permit the conversion of the second and third s- uh, s- about thirty-nine hundred and eighty square feet into residential, six residential units. The building would continue to contain mixed use. The property is located at eighty-six Main Street, tax map U two lot fifty-one, zone M two. And this is, for those of you in town, this is the Masonic Building. So, with that being said, uh, the caveat's there, we only have three members on. You need three, three votes to get a, get the variance granted. Uh, we've got a meeting scheduled in a week, next week? You've got another meeting scheduled next week?
May third.
May third. So, if you want to have it heard before a full board, we could adjourn this to a date specific, and have you heard at the next meeting. It's quite up to you. Uh, you're muted.
This is Henry Stebbins or Hank Stebbins. I'm a lawyer, and I represent C C eighty-six Main LLC. With me tonight on the video conference is Ben Stebbins, the manager of the Limited Liability Company. And what we would like to do is make the presentation and allow you to make inquiries of us. But we would like to reserve the right to postpone the actual decision until there's a further...
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because if there are members that come in next week, they will not have had the same opportunity to hear the evidence and question you the way we might have. So, I would rather, if we're gonna go that route, I would rather just postpone it to next week, and we'll take you then. What, what do you think, Wayne?
I think, I agree completely.
Al?
I agree as well.
Just trying to be fair to everybody.
I, I understand the dilemma, and I agree, and I think we will go forward, um, if it's all right with you. But appreciate your patience and willingness.
Fine, we'll, we'll have at it, it's, it's, it's at your risk.
As I said, I'm Hank Stebbins, um, the applicant is C C eighty-six Main and the New Hampshire Limited Liability Company, who owns the property located at eighty-six Main Street, which for decades served as the Masonic Lodge. Um, recently, we presented to the building inspector an application for a permanent permit to renovate the interior of the building, um, and to, uh, construct on the second and third floor of the building, which previously had been meeting rooms for the Masons, uh, six units of residential housing. The, um, building inspector rejected, uh, application for a building permit on February twenty-sixth and cited section thirty-two eighty-six residential density and table thirty-two eighty-nine dimensional controls of the zoning ordinance, which limit residential units to six per acre in the downtown M two district. Um, we are here to ask for a number of things, as you said, as special acceptance and a variance, but we have also prepared for the acceptance of the board and submitted to you, um, a fiscal impact statement, which we understand was required to be submitted with this application. And we've also, which was professionally prepared, and we would also, we also submitted a market analysis. Um, and we would like you to accept those documents.
Is it fiscal impact?
They were with the actual...
Okay, no.
Done by a consultant or...
Okay. Very good.
Okay?
Yep.
Um, according to the town records, the former Masonic Lodge located at eighty-six Main was constructed in eighteen seventy-three. Historically, the building was used for meetings of the local Masons. In recent decades, the membership declined dramatically, and recently, the few remaining Masons decided to close the New Market chapter and sell the historic property. The large building now sits mostly empty in a prominent location located right at the heart of downtown. The exception is that on the first floor is occupied by crack skulls, coffee, and books. The building's upkeep has been neglected for years, and it's badly in need of repairs and improvements. It's located in the town's M two zoning district. The stated purpose of that district is to protect and enhance the commercial, social, civic, and residential functions of the downtown district area. The ordinance goes on to recognize that the village is an important place of business and social interaction, and that zoning controls are intended to enhance the village by providing the high-density mix of uses, including, um, design compatible with pedestrian scale and historic, the historic nature of the area. Um, the ordinance goes on to say that multifamily residential uses may be permitted in the M two district if two conditions are met. The applicant prepares and the CBA accepts a fiscal impact statement, which I had earlier mentioned, um, which we supplied with the application, and the, the acceptance by this CBA of a market analysis. Again, we had a professionally repaired, prepared market analysis done and submitted that. Um, the thing that I want to particularly address, uh, right now, is the standards for the variance. Although the building lies in the M two district, which per the ordinance is to be high-density, New Market zoning ordinance, section thirty-two eighty-six residential density and table thirty-two eighty-nine dimensional controls limits the number of residential units to six per acre. This in a district which is intended to enhance residential uses by providing a relatively high-density properties, most of which lie on postage-stamped lots, have multiple housing units. In fact, this board recently granted a variance to one of the neighboring property owners to expand the existing non-conforming use and allow seven residential units on a small lot. An additional factor that we should consider in discussing this tonight is the fact that we're dealing with a historic building, a significant structure right in the middle of the village, a structure that remains under-cared-for and badly in need of repair and renovation. While we do not propose to change the architectural appearance of this historic structure, we propose to make ma- badly needed renovations to its interior, including adding a much-needed sprinkler system and maintain the historic exterior. Let me review the criteria for a variance. Our proposal would not be contrary to the public interest. The town's master plan speaks proudly of the multi-phase revitalization program in the downtown, which has spanned several decades. Our proposal represents a continuation of that revitalization. The master plan sets for the town the goals of continuing to promote mixed uses in the downtown and to encourage new housing developments, redevelopment, downtown mixed-use areas. Our proposal would be a substantial step in meeting these goals. It will continue the work revitalizing downtown Newmarket. The master plan also clears states that the town should continue its efforts to enhance and maintain the historic nature of the downtown district. One of the things that drew this applicant to purchase the Masonic Lodge was its historic place in the town and the state. We now seek to update and renovate the property while retaining its historic properties. We've watched for years now, the historic building has been left uncareful, slowly deteriorating. Now's time to give it the attention it deserves. Second criteria is that the granting of the variance would observe the spirit of the old, old ordinance. Section three point two of the ordinance states that among the specific objectives of the master plan is to implement the policies of the New Market Master Plan, including, I'm sorry, of the, of the ordinance, is to implement the policies of the New Market Master Plan, including but not limited to enhancing the downtown village area by providing an appropriate mix of uses, improving its impairments, and maintaining its traditional New England in character. As I already discussed, us to propose real, uh, historic property located at eighty-six Main Street seeks to address many of the stated goals and objectives of the town's master plan. Our proposal also concords with the New Market zoning instrument, statement that the purpose of the M two district is to provide for relatively high-density uses of New Market's downtown. Further, but no less importantly, granting the variance would comply with New Hampshire Supreme Court's ruling and simplex technologies v. New England. The ruling was that zoning ordinance must be consistently the character of the neighborhoods they regulate. Here, the conversion of two floors of eighty-six Main to residential units would be consistent with the many other properties in the M two district and the downtown neighborhood, which are non-compliant with section thirty-two point eighty-six and table thirty-two dash eighty-nine of the ordinance. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because this evening I quoted numerous passages from the New Market zoning ordinance, New Market's master plan, that consistently and unequivocally state that the purpose and goals of those documents support the granting of the variances we are requesting. Further, but no less importantly, granting the variance would comply with New Hampshire Supreme Court's ruling in simplex technology v. New England. Further, uh, as attorney Derek Durbin, counsel for New Market Holdings LLC, testified at this board's recent hearing, it could be argued that the maximum number of dwelling units restricted in the ordinance is not reflective of this particular area of Newmarket, where there is substantial density. Um, I want today to support attorney Durbin's position that the neighborhood we are discussing is filled with buildings that not, do not comply with the dwelling limitations established by the zoning ordinance, and tell you that not granting this variance would, in my mind, be a violation of the New Hampshire Constitution. For as the Supreme Court has ruled, New Hampshire Constitution guarantees to all persons the right to acquire, possess, and protect property. These guarantees limit all rights and power to the state that deprive individuals the reasonable use of their property. Four, if the variance were granted, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. As I just pointed out, the conversion of the second and third eighty-six Main would be consistent with uses, with many, with many, if not uses of many, if not all, of the properties in the neighborhood. The plan is to rehabilitate an historic, an existing historic building while adding new, up-to-date housing units, housing units that are greatly in demand in Newmarket and rocking, all of Rockingham County. This is to be done without altering the architecture of the building or modifying it in any nature that would diminish the value of neighboring properties. In fact, as stated in the master plan, the town's goal and should be to maintain the historic nature of the downtown district. Uh, the fifth criteria is unnecessary hardship. Eighty-six Main Street, the historic main Masonic Lodge in the heart of downtown Newmarket, has been neglected. It's slowly deteriorated. The building fills the lot on which it stands, from property line to property line, on a parcel that is by point oh five of an acre. Point oh five of an acre, one-twentieth of an acre.
A big garden.
It would be a good garden. The New Market Master Plan makes it clear that the historic town center is the driving economic engine of Newmarket, and the town has made preserving historic buildings a major part of its planning for the future. The six point eight million Main Street reconstruction project was undertaken to enhance the livability and vitality of New Market's business district. Proposal to update and renovate the historic Masonic Lodge is and should be seen as an important step in meeting the stated goals of the town's master plan. You will not go forward unless the town has it, as it has in the past, cooperates in making the project economically viable. Granting the variance is necessary to enable the reasonable use of this important historic district. Those are the criteria for the variance that I, that I just went through. I also think it's appropriate for me to discuss the situation with parking. Um, the applicant, the manager of the applicant, Ben Stebbins, is very concerned about parking in downtown Newmarket, and is a member of the New Market Park, Parking Commission. He's working hard to, to solve the parking problems in the village. Um, Mr. Stebbins owns a number of properties in town, um, some of which have extra parking units, and he has said that he will use those parking spaces, if necessary, for the tenants of the building in question until the overall downtown parking situation in Newmarket can be resolved. But we do want to refer you to section three point oh two A three of the ordinance, which reads as follows. In the M one and M two districts, parking shall be evaluated in a different manner. Typically, onsite parking is insufficient for its lack in complete. However, the downtown currently functions, people do find and park. So, that, rather than establish a members, member spaces required, is hereby determined that the amount of onsite parking is a base from which to analyze changes in parking demand. New or changed uses shall be evaluated from perspective of the changes in demand for onsite parking. Posed changes which decrease demand shall be permitted. Um, the conversion of the second and third floors, uh, which consist of approximately eight thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet, um, to re- six residential apartments will make the parking requirement, even though no parking, this no parking situation is already grandfathered, the parking requirement, twelve spaces. If you were to look at what the Masons have used this building for in the past, um, it's been a place where they've held meetings, numerous meetings, where they have, um, did the business of the Masons, and I'm not a Mason, so I can't tell you exactly what it is, but I think it involves providing services to the community. Uh, so if you take those as the base, if you just take the office business category under the zoning ordinance, the parking spaces would be one or two hundred and fifty square feet. This would be a total of sixteen spaces, or only seventy-five percent of what will be required with the residential use. If we select the meeting room category, which is what they mostly did there, the requirement would be one sp- would be one space per floor seats. Under the town's building code, the International Building Code, to determine the seating capacity of meeting rooms, one should divide the area of the space in question by seven to determine the seating capacity, and then, under the ordinance, again divided by seven to determine the parking spaces required. Applying this methodology, the second and third floors of the building would require over 130 parking spaces. So the grandfathered spaces that would have been required if it was just held as a meeting room would have been 130. What we're talking about is what would be required, although there's no space to apply it online, and what should be permitted under the applicant's action, is 12 spaces. And as I said, Mr. Stevens is committed to providing spaces until the downtown parking situation from other properties until the downtown parking situation has been resolved. We want to thank you for your time tonight, and we would greatly appreciate if you would take the four actions that we've requested. Both Mr. Stevens and I are available to answer questions.
All right. Thank you. I'm not sure, I don't see anybody up in the general public, but I'd like to open it up to public comment. So if there's anyone out there that's listening, I'll give you a few minutes to sign in so you can participate in the discussion. Not seeing anyone. If you've got any questions, Mr. Stevens, we can get our part of the discussion going right now. Wayne, Al?
My, my biggest concern was the parking. I'm not so sure I agree with the attorney that the parking situation's going to be resolved soon. I think it'll be later.
He didn't say soon. He never said soon.
That's right. He didn't, until it's resolved.
Well, I have to say, I have to say Ben's a hard worker, so he worked on it as hard as he can.
I've been in town for 40 years, and there's always been a parking problem, according to some people.
Oh, I've been here longer, and there's always been a parking problem.
It's endemic to New Hampshire community.
I guess, I commend you, I think the building should be saved. I think it's a historic building, and I think that you're doing a great thing. Let's talk about the parking. How many, where can you put 12 cars on other properties?
First of all, thank you all for your time today, Stevens. I'm the applicant. So I have, I own 100 Main Street, which is the Wiley House, which has 26 parking spots. Currently, there's four tenants that have cars there. So I have plenty of additional parking there. I also have additional parking at Fort Chapel Street, which I own, and I have five extra spots there. On top of that, I have 29 Central Street, which I just created the backyard into additional parking. I have four extra spots there as well. You know, the parking is quite, quite hard in Newmarket, and that's why a lot of the properties I have purchased, I purchased because of parking. I also just purchased a property down on Railroad Street, where New England's sign merited is, there's a big empty lot there, and what I pretty much work out with tenants is, I will give you one spot downtown, and then if you have an additional need for a spot, I can, I can use your spot and park on Railroad Street.
Let me ask you this, is there a way that we could make it, or would you be interested in making that contingent, an approval contingent upon?
Let me answer that, sir. The, the legal impediments of making a contingent variance are numerous, and the biggest one is credibility of property. That is to say, that that exception is always there. The issues have been resolved, and so we would have to respectfully decline.
Okay. Now I have...
So, just, we haven't had anybody come up for a comment from the public, the public input section, and, or just basically open it up to the rest of the board to continue. One of the things I was, it seems to me that with three units per floor, they're going to be rather small. Is there anything, what was the driving force behind getting to the three unit per floor? Could you have done it with two? Could you have gotten your return back with two?
So, to use the space efficiently, to make which has the least amount of impact on the town, is why we decided to go with one bedrooms. Also, how the building is currently separated, it makes the most sense to do it into three per floor.
Okay.
One of the things that's happened in our state is the demand for housing, as it's happened in lots of areas across the country, the demand for housing has become critical. According to the Wall Street Journal earlier last, at the end of last week, there are over 4,000 units of housing that there is a current demand for that can't be filled. And we know that the housing, the vacancy rates in Rockingham County are around 1%, a little less than 1% for most realtors. There's a huge demand for housing, and one of, one of the major reasons that people are, one of the things that people are looking for, is they're looking for affordable housing. So if you provide smaller units at a more affordable rate, it'll be meeting a real demand that the state has, and the state's employers have. So we think this is a terrific benefit, and that keeping the housing units in the size range that we're talking about benefits not only the town by giving it, meeting the housing demand that presently exists, but the whole area which needs more people and more housing to house.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Diane.
Yeah, I think you've done a very thorough job in identifying the housing needs and taking a creative look at the parking, and I think we all recognize that parking is a problem in downtown Newmarket and always has been. I did want to, I had one question for you. We talked a little bit about for one bedroom. Can you give us a range, perhaps, of what kind of rents we're talking about regarding...
Well, what we're expecting to do is we're expecting to charge market rent, and the market rent varied significantly over the last three years, and it go down. However, what we're doing is creating units that are small enough, market rent is still more affordable than if someone had to rent a house, or had to rent a bedroom apartment, or some...
So you're...
You can't give me range.
A studio, for example, in Newmarket rent between 1,000 and, you know, it depends what's in, anywhere from 900 to 1,200 per studio.
Say, 1,000 to 1,200, is that what you said?
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere right around there.
Okay. And I know that HUD is often used as a kind of rule of thumb, 30%...
They're at 998.
30% of fair market value, or 30% of one's income is supposed to be a reasonable amount of money to spend for your housing. So have you done any analysis to see what proportion of the market would...
So what HUD publishes their own, what fair market rent is for HUD, is 998 per studio, 1,130 for a one-bedroom, 1,330 for a two-bedroom, and that just continues to go.
I'm just trying to get a correlation between the value that you're going to be renting the units for, and what kind of demand there is in Newmarket, given our current housing statistics conditions, so that we can have a gauge as to whether we're meeting the demand that's out there for this type of housing. 30%, you know, rule of thumb of what the income, family incomes are, that's how you can get at that figure. And I don't know if Mr. Fugier, who did your market analysis and fiscal impact analysis, went to that step to be able to define that. But I think that would be interesting information that would help going forward for projects that come before us, because certainly there is a housing demand, and to the areas where there's need in the community. And I have one other comment I wanted to make. We talked a lot about parking. This is an application for a mixed-use development, which does require site plan approval, and we can look at the statistical data and the inventory and the information at the planning board stage and help to be able to identify if that housing, excuse us, being met.
Thank you.
I thought the presentation, all the groundwork was exceptionally well done. The demand and so forth were eye-opening, eye-opening. Parking is always a concern. Frankly, I, I think the analysis about the actual use by the Masonic group was a little bit out there, but, but I get you. This will, Diane, this will have to go before the planning board.
It's from our ordinance, so...
Pardon?
It's from our, them using, the arrows are out of our quiver to skewer us, but...
Okay. Okay. I'm not arguing our ordinance, I'm arguing some of the, no, mine. So, again, very, very well done. I think it's going to be a real boon for, for Newmarket. Are you going to do some interior work? I hope there'll also be some exterior work that does, but it's not the prettiest building downtown, and I, I hope, I hope that'll be part of your consideration as well.
So your target market's based, things like graduate students and under some other things like that, definitely a one-bedroom is not a single unit.
I don't discriminate against age, so I can't answer that, but I can tell you that that's what most people use for, for a one-bedroom.
Yep. And just one last comment. I mean, the thing that impacts us the most obviously is additional folks in the schools, and it's clearly set that aside to the degree that you can. And that's also a positive from my standpoint. I think the increase in revenue, I thought it would be more than what you identified, but again, I think you did a great job.
Wayne, you got any?
Well, I just want to conclude with, although the parking, I think bothers all of us, I think it's outweighed by the fact that it's going to go ahead and save a building that it has to make the dollars work, I understand that, and this is the best way. So I think, I think it's a good idea, and it was well presented, and I think it's a positive, positive outcome, and good luck at the planning board.
I, I, I agree with you on the parking. The parking has, has always been a problem, and it, we talk about it a lot, and I think it would go a long way to help the parking situation if most of the businesses required their employees to park off of Main Street, that would go a long way to excess problems. Where you've got some properties to deal with that we could probably work around, and the planning board's going to be looking at this a lot. So you've offered a very viable alternative, or viable solution to the parking question. I think you've demonstrated the impact is going to be less than the potential impact that building would have if restored to its current functionality. So I think that, so...
I have one other, one other question. Is there anything historic inside the building that has nothing to do with the permit that pertains to the mason that wants to be saved?
So I, prior to purchasing, the masons took out everything that was of historic for them, so they cleared it all.
They took out notebooks and decoder rings and stuff.
I'm hoping there's still gold in the walls.
All right.
Good luck.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have, you very astutely identified that Newmarket has some incentives available to developers to facilitate downtown redevelopment and housing rehabilitation, and one of them that you mentioned was RSA 79A, and of course, this is a historic building, it would be eligible for some re-taxation from the town through that program. And I was just curious if you had an interest going forward in application under the 79E.
Steve's not going to like you.
Well, it's been a very, and I say it because it's been a very success here in Newmarket with the Newmarket Mills, the Water Street project, and Selectwood, all of those projects which are similar, you know, adaptive reuse type projects nail themselves of that incentive, and it's really made a difference, also because of the historic character of the building. You're also eligible for some tax credits available through the National Park Service. So I was just curious if you were looking into those types of programs to facilitate the project.
Yep, I've definitely been looking at the historic tax credit that's available. One thing that, you know, that does help is keep the historic features of the building as well. And I've also have thought about looking at the RSA 79E.
I was just curious. Thank you for answering my question.
All right. So I guess a motion's in order. Why don't we deal with the special exception first in reference to section 32-46B2A? Do I have a motion to grant the variance?
Make a motion to grant the variance.
I'll second that.
So, to go with the variance, an application for special exception reference 32-46...
Yes.
And a variance, a second variance as well?
Well, we have...
It's a special exception in the variance.
Yeah, so we'll deal with the special exception first.
Okay. Let me do this. Special exception reference section 32-46, paren B, paren two, paren A.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, Wayne seconds it. Can, can we have a vote on it, Wayne?
Yeah, aye.
Excuse, what was that?
I have a real call note.
Yeah. Wayne?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And we'll show the submittals that we've been given as our finding of fact for that one. And now for the variance...
Also make a motion for variance reference section 32-86 residential density and table 32-9 dimensional table of the New York, Newmarket zoning ordinance requested by CC 86 Main LLC to permit the conversion of a second and third, third, a floor into six residential units. The building will contain, continue to contain, one more time, the building would continue to contain mixed use. A variance for residential density requirements calling for six acres necessary, as is the application for six units, is on a lot of approximately .05 acres, according to town records. The property is located at 86 Main Street, tax map U2 Lot 51, M2 Zone.
Second.
You have your variance, and we'll list that the finding of facts is going to be the information provided by Mr. Stevens. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time and thought.
Thanks for putting up with us. Thank you.
Putting up with us.
Have a good day.
Thank you. You too.
All right. Do we have any minutes to approve?
Well, I thought they were on the...
They're online.
Yeah.
They are online.
But Susan didn't put it on the agenda.
Let's, let's put it this way. I'll make a motion that we defer action on any meetings, meeting minutes till the next one, so we can just confer, confirm that we do have those.
They are online, Bob.
Yeah, I didn't...
But they should be on the agenda.
I didn't see them. I, I didn't look for them. My bad.
I make the motion.
Motion to table the reading of the...
I'll set them down.
Well, Wayne, your vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Aye.
Al?
Second.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.